All right, next up, we have Parent University.
We're really proud of the hard work and efforts of our Parent University team. And I wanted to start out by acknowledging the leadership of our administrative assistant, who's responsible for Parent University. You'll get to meet her in a few moments. But that's Dulnari Edursinga Aga. She's our administrator. She oversees our district community advisory committee, our volunteers in public schools program, our Parent University work. And she's really taken this particular initiative based on the board's direction to another level, as you'll see. Also want to greatly acknowledge Rebecca Fast, our teacher on special assignment, who's responsible for the workshops that we're providing to our parents through Parent University. She's also given great support to our school sites, in many cases, co-presenting with someone at a school, or helping to develop some materials for them, or doing some research on their behalf, or meeting with community partners that we can bring into the district to provide parent education trainings. She's done a tremendous amount of work, in addition to also spending a great deal of time on our high school choice and our middle school choice projects. So this is just one aspect of both of their works. But as you can see, it's a labor of love for them and for our entire team at the Office of Equity Access and College and Career Readiness. I wanted to help kickstart this conversation by revisiting with the board the work that we did in the spring to collect feedback from all of our parent groups throughout the school system. You might recall that the superintendent had a challenge to our stakeholders in our community, and particularly to our parents, in which he said, "Give us the priorities that you think we should focus on to try to close the achievement gap." And there were something like over 40 different items that he had on that list. And he tasked all of our parent groups to engage in dialogue, to analyze data, and ultimately to vote on all of these different ideas. Here you see how it looked at our district English learner advisory committee. It was the same process that we use for all of our other parent committees. And parents really had an opportunity to voice what they thought were priorities for us, the culmination of which were parent recommendations that we presented to the board in late May, and then ultimately that the board approved as part of our LCAP in terms of these six areas. So one was, you know, after-school enrichment. That was a big concern. But then there were also some other ones that were highlighted for us that were really crucially important for our parents. That includes things like social-emotional learning. That came about as a very high area of need. Helping families, helping students to access things through technology was also another area of need. What enrichment programs are available to our families, both after school and during intercessions and during the summer, that were available? And what Dulnari and Rebecca did alongside the rest of our parent coordinators here in our team, and then in conjunction with feedback from our school sites, was to try to determine what workshops we can provide to parents that would help to address these needs. And what you'll ultimately see in this presentation is a culmination of a lot of that work and all of the planning that is now going into the Parent University program that we're going to have in the 2019 and 2000 school year. And again, the central motivation for us here is research based on the idea that what is good for our parents and engaging our parents is ultimately going to have an effect on the performance of our students academically, their growth, social, their social-emotional learning, and their growth overall as a person. So we really want to make sure that we pay very close attention to how we support our parents alongside how we support our students. And ideally, we see this nexus of a network of support for our students in which parents and the school are engaged in alignment to try to support success overall for the kids. And this idea actually was exemplified this summer. We had our migrant education summer program. These are students whose families move around quite often, with many of their parents working in the Central Valley. So they move around quite a bit. And with our migrant education program, we have a summer enrichment program that focused on STEM. In conjunction with that, there was an associated parent education program that is part of this grant, in which parents also participated in STEM-related projects. And they built their own STEM-related products alongside their kids. So that's just one example of one way that we're trying to engage all of our families. Not every workshop is going to look like that, but certainly, we want to try to address as many different needs as possible in terms of family engagement. So with that, now, I'm going to turn it over to Dulnari, who's going to walk us through the program.
So this next slide shows what Parent University has been doing, who we've been supporting, our school sites and our parents, and what we've been doing to support these groups. Parents and school sites can access Parent University through the district website by clicking on the graduation cap. When you click on the graduation cap, it lands you on our Parent University page. On that page, we have flyers to our district workshops, to the workshops that we've been doing at the district. And it also has a link to our catalog and to our online courses. When parents click on our online course link, they have access to some of our most popular workshops. They can access these workshops from any place at any time on a device. There's live links embedded in the workshops, so that parents can get more information. We also have a feedback form that's at the end of each workshop, and this allows us to get input. And it also is an opportunity for parents to ask further questions and get more personal help. Currently, we have four workshops in English and Spanish, and we're working on a Kama versions with our Kama-speaking parent coordinator. So the goal for all the online workshops is to continue to develop these self-guided learning opportunities for our parents. We plan on doubling the content by the end of the school year. We have six workshops that we're actively working on to add to our library. We are working with district experts on some of these workshops. Rebecca is partnering with the FRCs, the Family Resource Centers, and she's working with them on a workshop on youth and anxiety and bullying. We're also working with Carol Ortega to develop workshops around the college career readiness guide and the high school readiness guide. The workshop topics were chosen based on feedback from schools and from parents.
Question.
Yes.
Can you assess how many parents are accessing these workshops? And if also, if there are any workshops that are accessing more than others? Do you have that kind of information?
That is something that we're working on, to try to put a counter, but it's hard because sometimes people go in and out. So that is something that we are working on for the online workshops, to try to see who's out. But one way to track it is with the feedback forms that we get.
Okay. Have you received any feedback with interest in having workshops or online resources for immigrant parents, given the national context right now and a lot of the fear that's in immigrant communities on either know your rights, or, you know, what to do if you're detained by Homeland Security, or, you know, things of that?
That is something that we can work on. And we have Title III workshops that are presented in Spanish, and schools can also have those out and having those translation. But that is something that, that's definitely something that we can add. That's a great idea.
I think it would be a great way to utilize some of our community partners, Long Beach Immigrants Right Coalition. So some of those folks who are already doing those kinds of workshops in the community, if we could bring them in, set them up where we could film them doing that. That way, they're the experts, and we don't need to be the experts in it. But we can utilize those partnerships in ways where we provide the technical support so that our folks would have access to it.
Yeah, we have a community partner section that Rebecca's going to talk about in our catalog, and we're always adding partners that can present workshops. So that's a great idea.
I'm always a big fan of increasing OMS's load. I know, I'm sorry. But you guys do such a great job of really capturing those things that happen at a point in time that I think are really useful to carry across. So again, I'd love to see those.
And there might already be existing resources that we just...
Just pull together.
Yeah, pull together, yeah.
So when we're developing the online workshops, we're also working on accompanying documents. Our team is writing scripts for voice-overs, so we're not just going to have PowerPoint slides. We want to have slides with voice-overs that talk through, with links to get more information. We're using iMovie to organize and edit the content. And so I'm going to have Rebecca come up and talk about our catalog. Hello, and good morning.
Hi.
So let me make sure I know how to use this here. Okay, so the catalog. So when I came to Parent University a few years ago, I inherited a catalog that was divided into three sections. And so we have the district courses. The district courses tend to be, a lot of them were workshops that schools needed to host at their school sites to be Title III compliant and for school site council compliance, so like Support for Common Core at Home. But in the last few years, we've added some workshops, such as LBUSD Resources for Student Success, Building Resilience and Growth Mindset, Parent View School Loop. And really what it is, it's educating parents on what's happening in the schools, using a lot of the language at the schools, and how parents can be that, can use the tools at home. And we get a lot of, "Oh, I didn't know it could do that," or "Oh, I didn't know that was there," when we do these workshops. And so Long Beach Unified is already providing a lot for our parents. We have a lot of resources, but sometimes it's taking the time to teach parents how to use them, and taking the time to really say, you know, "All of that, you can find that information on Parent View, and let me show you how." And so we're really not inventing any wheels. We're just really sharing what's happening in Long Beach with parents. And so the district courses have been modified to add a lot of that. With the Building Resilience and Growth Mindset, that's a lot of language that our schools are using. Kids are coming home, talking about growth mindset and fixed mindset, but parents really don't know what that means. So again, that workshop just really breaks it down, and how parents can support their kids at home by, you know, there's one slide, and that says, "Say this, not that," you know? How to praise your kids at home, how to support, because that's the language that our kids are using and our teachers are using in the schools. And so we really just want to have parents bring that home.
Rebecca?
Yes?
How are you promoting or marketing these workshops?
I am going to get to that, too. The catalog, so the catalog is, it's online, and there's Title III workshops that are offered in Spanish, and then we have workshops that are by community partners. And originally, this was just done by the school sites, and that's going to get me to my next slide, I think. Nope, sorry. Is, in the past, schools would use the catalog. They would call Parent University to come out and host a workshop. And we didn't really have a lot of the stay in the promoting. We didn't really have a lot of participation in how this was getting out there. We just really relied on the schools to get it out there. And it wasn't as successful. Attendance was low at these school workshops. I, myself, and a translator, would go out, and we'd have handouts, and we just didn't get a lot of parents. And so what we decided last year to do was to just see what would happen if we were to flip the model. And so in May 2019, we, working with many groups, we decided to host the workshops ourselves and invite parents and see what would happen. And so to answer your question, we did a group messenger, our school messenger, where we sent texts and emails every Sunday night. Parents would get a Sunday night, you text from me and an email promoting that week's workshop.
That was you that got the text?
That was me. That was me. I know, I, too, am a parent in the district, so every Sunday, I'd make sure that that text came through. So we would send texts. We sent the flyers to the school sites. We had the flyer available on our website. And so again, we flipped that model, or instead of having, waiting for the schools to invite us, we hosted the workshops. The topics that we chose, we only did it in May, and we did five weeks in May, were topics that were our most popular requested. So Building Resilience and Growth Mindset was one of our most popular topics. But I attend the DECAC meetings, and I attend the parent superintendent forum. And so I was listening, and listening to what parents were asking for and what parents were requesting. And so I chose the topics based on that. And we hosted our workshops at two sites, one at Hoover Middle School in their library, and that was on Tuesdays. And on Thursdays, we were at Bobby Smith Elementary in their cafeteria. And then we alternated Wednesday evenings. And so we just wanted to see what would happen if we invited parents, if we did a nighttime workshop, because as a working parent, I know that a lot of parents can't go to the daytime ones. So we flipped the model, and we had some great success. So at our first workshop, we had 73 families representing 37 different schools. And the 37 different schools is what I think is most interesting, is it wasn't like we were having 30 parents all from one school site attending, or it wasn't that they were all Hoover parents. We really were getting students and parents, or parents from across the district, from Newcombe to Washington and from Hamilton, really all across our district. Week two, we invited two groups. We had the Long Beach Teen and Adolescent Center present on our Tuesday. They weren't available to do both days, so we had NAMI, which is the National Alliance of Mental Illness, came and presented on Thursday. They were our two most well-attended workshops, and the most, too, that had many parents asking and wanting more after that. So those were very successful workshops. Week three, we did tech in the LBUSD classroom. We kind of promoted it, or, "Your kid's using Google Classroom and Google Docs, and you don't know what that means, come check us out." And we had a lot of parents that came. We had presenters from OCIPD that came out and walked the parents through how to use a Google Doc, and it was fun. We had all parents in on one Google Doc at the same time, and the parents, again, that aha moment. Week four was Resources from Success, where we went everything from Parent View to School Loop to Khan Academy. And then week five, Summer in the LBC. In this one, we partnered with our community partner, the Public Library, where they came and reviewed all of the resources available throughout the summer at our different libraries. You'll see on this slide, we'd had a lot of feedback from parents. At the end of each workshop, we had a paper and pencil survey where we would ask for feedback. Also, at the end of each workshop, because they do sign in, I would send a follow-up email thanking them for coming, but also supplying them with additional resources. And that way, they had my email, so if they had questions, they could ask. And so that was successful. And so our next steps, because of the success of the program that we had in May, we are continuing that flipped model where we have our fall workshops. So on Tuesday mornings at Browning High School, we are going to offer a series of 10 parenting workshops offered by the Long Beach Teen and Adolescent Center. A lot of questions on teen anxiety, you know, how do, you know, kids are just, you know, and it's in the news all the time, and so addressing anxiety, teen coping mechanisms, coping mechanisms, sorry, in parenting teens. So they're going to come out and do a workshop, a series of 10. And then Tuesday evenings at Poly High School, we are going to offer kind of more of a variety of classes. And so we're going to offer high school choice. We're going to offer building growth mindset, some of those popular ones, using the college readiness guide, and again, bringing partners. We're working with the Family Resource Center to do a couple workshops on anxiety and bullying, and so we're hoping to have that in our series at Poly as well. So that's what...
I really appreciate the change of venue, not that Hoover and Smith are, for whatever reason, those were chosen. Hoover especially is not super accessible in terms of transit. If you don't know where it is, it can be a little confusing in there. So I really appreciate, Poly is really transit-friendly. It's very central for a lot of parents who might have transportation issues. Browning, not so much, but I understand that they have space and they have parking.
That is our biggest issue, is space and parking.
Yes, so, but I do appreciate, because that was my question, that I scrolled on one of the other ones, in terms of choosing locations that most of our parents who would access, who are accessing these can attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll switch it back over to Dulnari. Thank you.
Are they going to be in the library at Poly?
They're actually going to be in, what's the room? It's the resource center right in front of us. The TRC, the TDR, sorry, the teacher dining room. It's accessible to the street.
Oh, perfect.
Right off Jackpot.
Perfect, thank you.
So the site consultations are a new practice that we plan on continuing. The purpose is to collaborate with site teams and create a plan for parent education. So principals are able to request a site consultation from Parent University via Google Form. And our role during the consultation is that of a thought partner or a critical friend. We sit together and look at data to drive our plan and workshop selection for the site. We take a look at core data. We look at ELAC recommendations, what school site council is saying. We ask what current parent education is in place. We look at the CIE plan, specifically the parent involvement section, and make our plan from there. During the consultation, we also ask the site, a leadership team, to help identify teacher leaders or staff leaders that can collaborate with our team to carry on the work at the site. We started this practice May, end of May, and it went on till about mid-June. And during that time, we consulted with 19 schools. Next steps, we plan on continuing with site support. We will be available to do the parent workshops at school sites, where Rebecca and Yolanda and Sam can go out. But we're really, really encouraging the model where we collaborate with sites to develop workshops and present the workshops, because the idea is we want to build capacity at the sites so that work can carry on there. And there's also a familiar face at the site, so if parents have questions, there's familiarity, there's someone that they know that they're familiar with.
So walk me through that. Parents at Franklin are, you know, having conversations about a particular topic or issue that they feel is important. What would be the next step for them?
So they can either take it to school site council or take it to their principal. And we are, we're also, a lot of our advisory boards, like the DECAC, there's Parent University information given out to them, so they can go back to their sites and ask their principals, "Can we have Parent University come out?" We've also been out to principals' meetings, assistant principals' meetings, and then Rebecca's gone out to the counselors' meetings, so that they know that Parent University is there. So if there is an issue, the principal can reach out to us. Parents can also reach out to us, too. We've had that where it was our, one of the, our DECAC members that was really asking for something at their school site, and we were able to coordinate something with that site.
But it doesn't require like a sign-off or approval from the principal, does it?
We do talk to the principal and collaborate with them.
Okay.
We have had PTA calls as well.
Yeah, on that note, what we want to do is ensure that all the parent workshops that we provide are in alignment with what the school's goals are. So we want to, we encourage that kind of collaboration, and we want to cultivate that kind of really positive relationship between the home and the school. In some other cases, though, we might offer a district-based workshop that we host at that particular school site, or we might host at another particular school site and invite everyone to it. Because what we're increasingly also finding is that it's not just one particular parent that desires one topic, it's everyone. So there's a constant desire, now you'll see in our model, where we try to create a workshop that we can then think about, how do we deploy this in multiple ways to meet the parents where they're at? Either something that can be replicated by a school, something that can be replicated by another department, something that can be hosted at another site, something that a community partner can do at a local library, for example. It's something that we're exploring with the city of Long Beach. And then something that we can also deploy online in a video format. So it's differentiated in multiple formats across the board in multiple languages.
Good point. I would say the Michelle Obama Library has that great space, and I'm sure the Billie Jean King Library will as well, both with parking. Thank you for all of your work. I see you guys everywhere. I see you at the meetings, and I see you listening. That's most important. You're not always, sometimes during presentations, you're off to the side, just like I am. But when it comes time to conversations and really listening to parents, you're right at the tables, and you're listening and responding, and that's reflected. That's very clearly reflected in the work that you're doing. And I've watched Parent University grow for eight, 10 years, even when I was a parent, saying, "How can we do more of this?" So it's really incredible to see where it's come. One technical issue is when you clicked on the homepage, and I think I've clicked before, just thinking, this isn't, it isn't where folks would necessarily go, but I think it is related, that on the tabs on the side, potentially adding the link to the schedule of public community meetings. Now, it's not that learning model, but it is that public community meeting, but while they're there, they might want to know when the DECAC meeting is, or when the next parent forum is. So maybe on that side, just a schedule for them to be able to make the connection of, these are those interrelated things that we're trying to weave together. And one other suggestion I would have, as you're developing your courses, we have such, we're doing a lot of work around equity. And that's a directive of this board and the superintendent with all of our staff. And I think kids may be coming home with new experiences or new vocabulary around that in ways that they haven't before, and so maybe looking at what that work would look like with parents. And that can get a little tricky, I know. But to really look at some of those bigger themes in light of the political climate that we live in, in light of the anxiety and all of those other pieces that oftentimes are related to some equity issues, potentially some racial issues and cultural issues. So I would just throw that out there as something to let that ruminate, and maybe we find some community partners that do that work that could help. But that with parents, that might be a really excellent place to start, since we know kids learn some stuff at home.
Yes.
Also, I have a question. I missed the date of when the 10-week workshops are going to start.
September 24th? September 24th.
Okay, thank you. Also, I want to thank you for presenting to PTA. The PTAs gather once a month, the presidents, and I know that Parent University has presented at that group. And so that's 45 PTA presidents going out to their individual sites and spreading the word, so that's helping to promote Parent University. And that, I think, is a good marriage, because part of PTA's goal is to inform parents, to educate parents, so that fits right in. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the partnership model, for me, highlights the aspect of this that is more about the engagement piece, and not to diminish or trivialize the education piece. But I think this is another avenue that we can highlight, parents as allies, as coeducators through the community partnership piece, where, you know, groups like LBIRC, it's actually parents that run those workshops. So, you know, it uplifts this asset-based, values-based approach as, where it's not the district saying, "Here's what you need to know about X, Y, and Z." In some cases, we do need to do that. But it brings, you know, that's where I was coming from with the idea of if parents are already sort of anchored in certain topics and certain issues that they themselves have gifts and knowledge and talents in, then that's where the community partnership piece, I think, uplifts that. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
CCEJ could be another model of using our young people who are already within our system, who have been trained in some of that work, to have some of our young folks come in, potentially, and do some of that teaching to the grownups in the room.
Yeah, that's a great point. One of the, one of the main objectives of the LCAP community forums is actually to do precisely some of that. So we saw some models that were really successful, where CCEJ would conduct a workshop that can then be deployed by school sites. So doing a little bit more of that. Our community partners also express an interest and a desire in a parent workshop that focuses on developing parent leaders. So parents who are interested in becoming engaged in school site council or in ELAC, but maybe a little anxious about how to navigate that system. They have a lot of talent, they have a lot of great feedback, they want to be involved and engaged. So how do we activate them in a way that they can channel their energy towards something that produces something really positive at the school? That's going to be something that's going to come up. I want to end on this note, which is actually the first site consultation that Dulnari, Rebecca, and I did with an elementary school in the central part of the district. And it was with the entire leadership team of this elementary school. And they have a really high Cambodian population, a really high English learner population. And we asked them, "Well, what are some of the needs that you've seen?" We obviously have the data, and we're looking at the data together, but just qualitatively, what are some areas where you think we can help to add value to your program for supporting parents? And I think it was one of the teachers who expressed, you know, "It would be nice if we can help parents know how to write a note when the kid is going to be absent to the teacher." And we thought about that for a second, and it was intended to reflect this notion of how do we, how do we support parents so that they feel less anxious about communicating with teachers and with schools? So we've done a lot of work around, here's LBUSD 101, here are all the different tools that we have at our disposal. But it dawned on us that what that particular school site was looking for was something that was really practical, how to help parents write and communicate better with the schools, which would ultimately improve the relationship that they have with teachers, and make them feel more comfortable at that school, and make them feel more welcomed at that school. So this notion, which I know our teachers... So we've done a lot of work around, here's LBUSD 101, here are all the different tools that we have at our disposal, but it dawned on us that what that particular school site was looking for was something that was really practical, how to help parents write and communicate better with the schools, which would ultimately improve the, the relationship that they have with teachers, and make them feel more comfortable at that school, and make them feel more welcomed at that school. So this notion, which I know our, our teachers have already been employing, of making the emphasis of, of any lesson be focused on something that is practical and practice-driven. Embedding those kinds of ideas into our workshops is something that we're grappling with more and more. How do we make it less us instructing parents of how to navigate the system, but us really empowering parents by equipping them with these skills? That's, that's a question that we have, and we're posing to ourselves, that we're opening up this dialogue now with the board and with the community. Another is this notion of really meeting parents where they're at and what that means. So Mrs. Kerr mentioned one, which is where we locate and at what time we have our workshops. That's obviously a consideration we have to take into account logistics and what's available, but also for some parents who can't come, and why they might not be able to come, and how they can continue to be engaged, whether that's online courses, and then maybe we can use the, the Google technology that we've been using in our classrooms to now deploy with our parents. Just this notion of trying to really break the model of how we think about engaging parents is, is something that we're really excited to grapple with. And then lastly, partnering with communities, and partnering with nonprofit organizations with so much expertise in one particular area. Dr. Benitez mentioned this, this notion around immigration. In many cases, we can't answer questions that focus on the legalities of what our families are experiencing, but we can certainly work alongside a community partner and say, "Based on the experiences we've had as a Parent University group, these are the techniques that we use and that we've found to be really best practices on how to educate parents." Equipping them with these pedagogies, so to speak, or with the materials that we use, and partnering with them and their technical and content expertise to create a workshop that is truly going to address the needs of families. So this also allows us to branch out and say, "How do we engage this community partner in helping us promote these workshops?" Because for many of them, they're driven by grants, and they, they have a target to accomplish, too, in terms of the number of families and parents that they meet, and we want to help them accomplish their goals while at the same time accomplishing our goals as well. So really embracing the notion of working with community groups to try to address the needs of our families is something we really prize.
I, I love that, Robert, and, and the content piece is certainly extremely important, but it's also the approach, right, and the delivery of it. I'm thinking Dr. Baker of the CFJ-led, you know, trainings, that, you know, themes around ageism and other things emerge where it's either, like, you know, in this example, a content that could be delivered by, and again, it's not to downplay, district staff and/or a community partner staff versus the community partner facilitating, along with us, parents delivering the content, right, and, and students, right? So, yeah, love that.
I appreciate that bringing in of partners, because we know in this community and in this town that the school has access to the biggest database of people, and for many of those organizations, being able to access folks becomes the biggest barrier to being able to do the work. So if we can be willing to be the access point to say, "We'll send it out to all of our fifth graders, we'll send it out to fourth graders in this community, or 10th graders here," that allows great work that's being done throughout the community to be amplified at really no cost to us. So, you know, identifying those community partners that we've got an agreement with and that we trust to, to really be their mouthpiece, I think, is, is a really important step and something that a lot of them would welcome.
So I have a pitch, Robert, since, since my colleagues here feel similarly. So we have the U.S. 2020 Census work emerging with the city of Long Beach, with LBCC. Cal State Long Beach just announced a complete count committee being established there. This, this could be an easy entry point for, for us to talk about, you know, build, build community capacity, of course, but to talk about that model with other potentially interested community partners, right, because their boots are going to be on the ground in ways that they haven't been in 10 years, and, you know, with, with the census dialogue nationally, also, you know, exacerbating the fear in our communities on the U.S. citizenship question, you know, there, there still is a lot of, of worry in our communities about showing up to official events and activities, and so this, this could be one way to, you know, leverage the, the educational spaces that we provide around activities that will be going on in the community, right? People will be coming around knocking on people's doors in the next few months. People will get phone calls, right? And so, again, we can uplift the educational safe space that we provide with that collaboration that you just mentioned, Board Member, because, so we, we have a unique and big opportunity here with our Census count, that we'll be doing work in any ways, in advertising, promoting, doing outreach, but, but I think it's, it's, it's in these pivotal historical moments that we can uplift the, the safety of our schools for our community members.
Robert, Delnari, and Rebecca, thank you.
All for presenting to us today. Very excellent presentation. I think we're at a break for lunch, and we'll be back here at 12:30. Thank you.